Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the -- I'll talk really slow and see if Trustee Hopkins can make it back. Okay. I haven't restarted a timer for me on.
Go ahead.
Have to pass out those things you give at restaurants where the little light starts flashing.
Yeah, that'll work. All you need is a balloon.
We did? Oh, nice.
You mean that wasn't a dog?
All right, we're gonna start. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the whole meeting for May 15, 2018. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Here. Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Gibrinha absent. Hopkins?
Here.
Frankie?
Present.
President Wallace.
Here. Only Adam, we have under agenda this evening is under Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have this evening discussions on request for proposals for broker consultants services for the village health, dental, and life insurance? And we have two groups that are going to speak with to us this evening. And I believe the first, the Hub group, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Janelle?
No, I was just gonna introduce them, but you did a really good job with that.
Well, it's much better coming from you.
Thank you. We have Mr. John Herr and Mr. Jim Cornelius from the Hub International. And so I'm gonna leave it up to them to present.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. Just gonna give you a quick background on where we've come from. We'll keep it brief and interactive. If you have questions, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. Our journey into insurance, we both started around '84. And in '96, after about 13 years on the wholesale side, I started an insurance brokerage company called Corporate Benefit Consultants. We started with a partner or two and a secretary. And after about 18 years, we had over 30 employees and about $8 million in revenue. And I think what we're most proud about is the impact that we had in the public sector. You know, we did a lot of private sector business, but in the late '90s, we decided that it was time to create transparency. We really believe in an honest relationship. And I know you've had a brokerage relationship with a -- they aren't a big house, they're more of a boutique shop. And that's kind of where we came from. And I think you tend to get better service from those boutique shops. But as things changed and evolved, the opportunity for us to grow and become part of a larger entity, which we sold to the Hub Group four years ago, was a great opportunity for us to expand our brand, build their brand, at which point we've about tripled our presence in the market. But just what I wanted to talk briefly is about our experience in the public sector. So in about '98, we realized that most entities such as yourself didn't know what they were paying their brokers. And we decided to go in because your 950, 500 Schedule A, you didn't know. And we went in and we went in with a very simple ethos. And it was, you always put the client first, and what are you gonna charge, and what are you gonna do? And most of the people didn't know what they were paying. So we said, well, sign this little letter, send it into Blue Cross or whoever the vendors will -- were, they'll tell you what it is. And we found that here was our fee, here's what we do. And after our first couple of meetings where we started doing this procedure, we started writing business. And we wrote about 50 public entities, our little shop, over the next 10 years. And the reason was because we had a very fair price, which based on what you're probably paying now, which is a normal commission to the Blues, you know, we're probably 15% to 20% below that. But the services and the expertise that we have, we feel, because we've been in the space for as many years as we have, working from counties, multiple counties, all the way down to local groups, municipalities, school districts, we had a large impact. And what I'm most proud of is that reputation really grew with us. So I think that gives you a little bit of a background that we've been in the business, we've been honest, you know, people, we've worked hard on behalf of trying to do the right thing for municipalities in particular. And I think if you start to look at your particular group, you're an experience rated contract, there's some opportunities within your HMO to reduce costs, probably be about 6% without really changing benefits. There's also some opportunities, perhaps, I don't think you can change your funding mechanisms, but it's important to go out to bid once in a while. And talking to Janelle, I met her about three or four years ago, and we hit it off very well. I think she liked what we had to say, she saw our credibility and said, you know, when we do go to market, we'd love to have you come out and present. So thank you again for the opportunity to do that. And if you were to hire us, I think what you'd get, my perception is we have a value that nobody else has. And no offense to any other brokers in the House or other brokers you may see next week, but we have that boutique service shop. I personally hired most of the service people in our office, who I feel are second to none. We still have that group boutique camaraderie. But we really have the strength of a world-class brokerage company. We, in the report there, you'll see us as the seventh largest brokerage in the world. We're actually the fifth largest brokerage in the world today. We have 11,000 employees, and we have multiple structures of which we bring expertise from communication. I'm -- John's gonna touch on that in a second. And I don't want to get long-winded on this, but I wanted to let you know that we do have the expertise to manage your account in a very fair and efficient manner. John had been with Blue Cross for 12 years. Our little company, before we sold, we were the sixth largest producer in the state for Blue Cross. There are not too many people that can boast that. So we know how we got there, we know the ins and outs of the Blues, we're connected with management. And because most of the public sector entities such as yourself are with the Blues, that becomes a very important part of your resume, which we have. So before I turn it to John to kind of talk a little bit further, and we're gonna keep it brief because I know this is a long day for everybody, but, you know, are there any particular things that you'd like us to specifically talk about or address before John gives a few more minutes on specifics of our expertise? Any thoughts, questions?
What tactics have you used in other municipalities to reduce the cost?
Well, that's a great question. So the first thing I think we do for your group, because you have a dual option, PPO, HMO, you can't go what they would call cost plus or self-funded. Blue Cross requires 250 lives for that. So that's the first thing you do if you're eligible. You're not eligible for that. So I think the first thing we would do is we would pull out your commissions. And they're probably four or five points. I don't know exactly what they are, but when you pull those out, we'll get a little bit more than you're paying back in your pocket. And I think based on what we calculated you to be paying, I know that we're gonna be below that. So there's gonna create some savings there. Clearly, you have, I think you have HMO Illinois, which is unique for a group of your size, but you're experience rated, and that gives you some advantages. We have finance group, we can work with that, we can argue trend with the underwriters, you know. But also, I mentioned it before, you haven't really instituted the Blue Advantage HMO, I don't think. So that may be a great opportunity. We run a disruption report, see what it looked like for your group, and we might be able to save five or six points right there for your HMO side. On the PPO side, it's really, it's really strength of relationship with Blue Cross because we're held up to their manuals and your experience and your ongoing claims. So we'd work with our finance group to see if, you know, if we can remove reserves that they would calculate for ongoing claims of your group. And, you know, you might find, we've actually hired, without getting too far into it, you know, we would work on your individual situations to see if we could reduce reserves that they're holding for you, get an overall reduction in your program. And sometimes it's pleading to the Blue Cross Court, you know. Blue Cross made over $1 billion this year. Last year, they made 300, or they lost 300 million, mostly in the exchanges. But because they have made so much money, in the days where the average broker might be getting three or four points, I think because we are the second-largest producer in the state of Illinois, only next to Gallagher, because they have pools, frankly, we've been getting like six, seven points for a lot of our groups. So a lot of it comes on the strength of the size and scope of who we are, our relationship with the Blues. You know, you can't, I mean, you're talking cost share and co-pay. If you change contributions, those are some, you've got some unions still on the plan, I believe, some are not, but, you know, you're not gonna get too far there without negotiations. So I think you really have to get into the carriers' retention. And I think we're very, very good at that, based on our relationship with the Blues.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add something to that as well. First thing we do is we obviously look at culture. What is your culture? We wanna make sure that anything that we represent or recommend is in line with that. I think that's very important. Secondly, Jim touched on about HMO Blue Advantage. Well, there's something called Blue Choice Select. Blue Choice Select is referred to as a skinny Blue Cross network. It lacks about 60% of the overall network, but we offer that as an option to your current PPO plan. And there could be as much as an 8% differential in pricing. So we feel it's important, before we even start talking about, we're gonna charge your employees more money, we're gonna make benefit changes, we wanna make sure that we creatively look at the things we can do for you that do not allow that to actually happen.
And for example, there's one other very basic things that a lot of people are moving towards, and it's called an HRA. And I don't know if you guys have looked at this, but you have very low deductibles. When you're captive to the low deductibles, it's like inelastic demand in economics, you know. You have a $250 deductible with Blue Cross, they know you have to have that $250 deductible, and they're charging you more than it's worth. So ideally, you like to retain more risk, perhaps retain $1,000 or $2,500, or maybe even $5,000. The Blues will allow you to go up to those levels, you self-fund the difference. But there are communication issues. And, you know, you can drop your costs probably by 13%, and then the self-funded piece that you'd have to pay back might only be four, five points of that.
Yeah.
So there's a way to save a lot of money by creating additional retentions, but there's communication. And there's a process of reimbursement that has to happen, which not as clean as your current broker.
It's change. You have to teach people how to think that way.
It is. It is change, and sometimes it's worth it, and sometimes it's not, you know. But I think those are the things that go along with culture.
I'm sure our HR person could handle it right.
Put her on the firing.
Any other questions for these folks?
Can I quickly just go through, this is something unique that we came out with, we, this is in lieu of a 50-page PowerPoint.
We appreciate that.
No problem at all. No problem at all. So plus, you get to --
Tell us what it's gonna cost and how good you are.
Yeah, two pages.
It kind of tells you also, gives you a sense of how we use our communication resources. And what we've done here, and Jimmy's done a good job kind of telling you a little bit about Hub, you can see kind of what makes us different, we've kind of talked about that. I think when you look to the right and you look at client experience, this is just a number of just a few names that we have. I personally work with Village of Arlington Heights and Village of Isles, and have had these clients for a great number of years. As Jim said, we've been in this space for quite some time. I would also point out, if you flip over to the backside, we talk about compliance, we talk about health and performance, communication is very big, data analytics is huge. Our data analytics, one of the things, Jim talked about Corporate Benefit Consultants, we were a great shop, and we take a lot of pride in that. Make a very long story short, when Hub bought us, we, one of the reasons we sold to them was because of the promise to get all these additional resources that we can share with our clients. And for all the clients that we had with Corporate Benefit Consultants, we told them this, it was actually a pretty easy transition, once we explained to them the resources they in fact were gonna get from Hub.
And I want to point out something out that's totally unique to Hub. Hub is a middle-market group. I mean, you go to Aon, you go to Willis, I know they're not being invited to the table here, but we have those Fortune 500 solutions. Hub has them. I mean, we're a $2 billion revenue company, you know, I mean, we've got resources. And I didn't realize how much value that brought to companies of your size, groups of your size, until I was out there realizing that nobody else does what we do. They can't come down to 150 life group, you have 150 some on the plan, and provide the resources that we provide at the fees that we charge. And that's why we're different. You know, we're the only guys that have that bench strength, that have those resources, and can do it for the fees that we have. So if you truly make your decision based on cost, ability to perform, and resources provided, we will win, we will win this bid, you know. And I think Janelle can speak to the fact, I spent probably, it's been a few years, but we spent probably 45 minutes talking, and I think she knows that what I'm saying is true. And, you know, we didn't ever grow by not telling the truth. We grew by being honest and putting the client first. That's why we're here. Normally, you know, sometimes these things are already done, you know, by the time we get up here to present. But we figured, because Janelle reached out for us, that we would come out and bring our resources, bring our value, and bring our best deal to you guys. And if you choose us, we will, we will be your best broker that you've ever had.
Good. Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good luck in your choice.
Thank you. Really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out this evening. We have another broker for presentation this evening. It's Connor Gallagher, and with that, I'll turn it over to Janelle.
Thank you, Trustee Danny. Again, you did a marvelous job with your introduction. So tonight, we have representatives from Connor Gallagher. I don't know all of their names, but I do know Tom.
Okay.
Okay. And I also have Dan Daly here as well, so. And they do have a presentation, so.
Yeah.
So we're gonna get that plugged in and...
Thank you. Well, my name is Tom Connor. I'm the president of Connor Gallagher Insurance Services and Connor Gallagher One Source. And first, I'd like to thank Mayor Wallace and the trustees, as well as the staff, for giving us an opportunity to introduce Connor Gallagher One Source and our service capabilities. CGO is a 21-year-old company that my partner and I started from the ground up. Our firm started with two people, obviously, and we're now 80 people, with four divisions. We're specifically commercial insurance brokers. We do nothing but commercial insurance. There's two areas I'd like to touch on, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Dan Daly, who would be the steward on your account if we were to win the bid. But the first thing I'll say is Connor Gallagher is a privately-held company. We have spent the last 10 years structuring internal perpetuation so that we can remain a privately-held company. It's our belief that it makes us more flexible, when we can pivot on an idea or a program, staff up, and execute without going through a bunch of red tape to get that, get that done. When an idea is developed, it would be beneficial to the Village of Bartlett if we can bring it to your staff on an immediate basis and assist them in getting it executed. We're flexible, we feel we're able to pivot and implement any idea that comes up in a very short period of time. The second point I'd like to make, we don't answer to shareholders, we don't answer to venture capital partners, and we don't answer to a board that is not involved in our day-to-day operations. And for that reason, we have, we've elected to stay independent because it's our belief that we have one boss, and that boss is our client. And it's our responsibility to be able to react to the client's needs in an immediate fashion. And we do that because we empower our people internally to make all the decisions on behalf of the clientele that they support. So with that said, I would like to turn the podium over to Dan Daly. He is our employee benefits consultant that would be assigned to handling the Village of Bartlett. And he will have an opportunity to drill down a little further on what we do and introduce the team that would be handling the day-to-day needs of the Village of Bartlett with your staff. So once again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Tom.
I had no Tom's thought in thanking you for giving us the opportunity to meet with you this evening. As Tom had mentioned, I would be the benefit consultant if I were the business. My responsibility would be really overseeing the entire account, whether it be renewal, whether it be pre-renewal, whether it be implementing any type of programs, engaging wellness or so forth. At my disposal, and people who will help me accomplish this are some team members. So I brought just a few of the team members here this evening, and what I'd like to do is have them step up, just introduce themselves and give you a brief description as to what they do, okay?
Good evening. My name is Lupe Salgado. I'm the Director of Client Services at Connor Gallagher. I've been with them for four years, 25-plus in the industry, longer than I care to admit sometimes. But together with our practice leader, Luke Barnett, we oversee the office, our practice, and I oversee the operations and the service side of it. We have teams of service people that take care of our clients' day-to-day needs. We have a Cobra department, we have an administration department. And part of my duties is just to oversee, to ensure that our teams have all the necessary tools to service our clients and serve as a resource to them as well, and also be a key with all the compliance issues that may come up. We have all the resources, we have all the connections, we have direct access to all of the carriers, as well as negotiated pricings for certain things that may be needed for all of our clients.
Hello, my name's Anna McColligan, and I am an account executive with Connor and Gallagher. I have been with Connor and Gallagher for two years. Before that, I was with another brokerage firm for eight years, so 10 years' experience in the insurance industry. I work in the key account section, and together with my team member, Adriana, we would be your day-to-day contact for administrative purposes as far as the benefits go. We also work with Lupe, and like Lupe said, the Cobra Department and the Benefits Admin Department to facilitate all the issues that you may have that comes up day-to-day.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Gabrielson, and I've worked for Connor and Gallagher for 10 years. And right now, I oversee the Cobra Department to make sure that all of our clients are Cobra compliant, making sure that all the notices are going out. We have a two-person team that does that. In addition, we work candidly with Benefits Admin Department. They will handle any admin or eligibility, like ads and terms that are coming in from our clients. We try to take that off of the client's plate so that they don't have to worry about that. We do all the romance, we do all of the terminations, and it's streamlined right into our Cobra Department. In addition, I also oversee the claims specialist. I handle all of escalated claims. So if we have someone that maybe is having trouble getting a claim paid, or they have a serious illness and they need help navigating with insurance, I'm the person that they would work with directly. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kayla Rosky, and I am the Director of Client Wellness at Connor and Gallagher. I come with over five years of experience in the employee benefits and wellness field. And in prior lives, I have specialized in working in the public entity, where I've worked with several villages, counties, cities, fire districts, and school districts, both on the benefits and the wellness. Like the rest of our team, we definitely serve as the extension of your HR team and the village to serve your employees and help on those day-to-day tasks. With my role as the Director of Wellness, I am going to also serve as the extension of your team to provide, build, implement, and manage a comprehensive wellness program for your members that really focuses on prevention, awareness, mitigating risk, in order to control costs, mitigate costs, really, really wrap around the cost containment feature, as well as building a culture of wellness for your village, and also to keep your members, not only your employees, but also their family members, happier, healthier, and more productive within the village.
Thank you. Thanks. You know, at this point in time, I'd like to make a couple of comments and then run through our presentation. Be as fast as possible, given the time and that. But, you know, as Tom had mentioned, with our clients, our whole focus, our whole center is working with you. And what we view you as, is number one in the equation, right? We have a lot of different players, we have a lot of different access, but when, you know, when things come to a boil, it's basically, what can we do for you? How can we do it, and how quickly we can pivot and help you? You know, and looking at Blue Cross Blue Shield, I know the fellows at Hub and quite a few others, it is kind of interesting in the sense that, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, they're a wonderful organization, and we have a lot of business. They are our largest carrier by far. But I will tell you this, as I look at your account, you know, our role going forward will be to actively market your account and look to any and all possible alternatives or substitutes to Blue Cross Blue Shield. I say that from the standpoint of knowing Blue Cross Blue Shield, and knowing that in your space right now, they more or less know that you're not gonna do much, right? They know that they more or less have you. So in negotiating, and we do this day in and day out with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the only way that you get them to move off their numbers, the only way that you really get them to get in and start negotiating, pulling out the sleeves, is to show them that you're serious about leaving them, okay? This process that we have been put in place over the years has been immensely successful. I mean, we go eye to eye, and more times than not, we find they're the ones who are blinking at the end. But in order to do that, too, we really have to walk in and have a real solid strategic plan and a timeline. I'll give you an example. If you go to Blue Cross Blue Shield in October, and you don't have the numbers you need, you don't have the marketing results and so forth, as a former underwriter, I know you're not going anywhere. So as a broker, I lose my leverage. So what does that mean? The minute, you know, June, you know, the minute you convene in June, pick a broker, hopefully it's us, we're gonna start immediately. We're gonna start meeting with your HR staff, we're gonna analyze your program, look at certain options, implement a game plan, and have a timeline. Because as I said before, without one, the leverage moves over to Blue Cross Blue Shield, we lose ours, and they know it's more or less a bluff. So there's a lot that tends to go into that, okay? You know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, you're in a very difficult situation with them, and I say Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I'd say any carrier, Aetna, Cigna, Humana, because you're in a market where, and you're of the size, where they make the most money. You know, I have accounts, just like Hub and everybody else, that are thousands of employees, and I work with them. None of them are fully insured, they're self-insured. Guess what? No insurance company makes money on self-insured clients, right? You're paying your administrative costs, you're paying your own claims, the margin's pulled out, the credibility is all yours. So they sit there and they kind of shake. I mean, I was at a Christmas party with the people from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they're wonderful, wonderful people. I sat there, I turned to one of the fellows, I said, one of the leaders, I said, why don't we have a level-funded product for groups in the 150, you know, 150 to 250 range? He quite frankly said, he said, Dan, this is a salesperson, we have been working with underwriting for the longest time. But the problem being is, we make so much money in this, this is our golden calf. We get rid of this, or start carving up this market or this piece, we have to find it from someplace else, and we just haven't figured out the puzzle. So it's a constant battle between sales- So, they sit there, and they kind of shake. I mean, I was at a Christmas party with the people from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they're wonderful, wonderful people. I sat there, and I turned to one of the fellows, I said, one of the leaders, I said, "Why don't we have a level-funded product for groups in the 150, you know, 150 to 250 range?" He quite frankly said, he said, "Dan," this is a salesperson, "we have been working with underwriting for the longest time." But the problem being is, we make so much money in this. This is our golden calf. We get rid of this or start carving up this market or this piece, we have to find it from someplace else, and we just haven't figured out the puzzle. So, it's a constant battle between sales and underwriting and the type of products that they can bring to you. So, you know, as I said before, with that being said, we've, you know, this is our niche. You know, we mentioned the RFP, that our average group size is 125 employees. Mine's 150, and you're 160-some employees. That is absolutely in our sweet spot. That's the majority of our clients. We live and breathe and analyze those types of programs. So, from that standpoint, there's not much that we haven't seen. I mean, if you look across the board there, there's over 150 years of experience. I've been in it. I worked for Aon. I worked for the top two brokerage firms in the world. I was an owner of one and left about 11, now 11 years ago. I met Tom and Dan at Connor and Gallagher. Loved the agency, loved what they enabled us to do. What we were able to do within the agency is build out practices that are similar to the big guys. I helped design Willis's. I helped design Aon's benefit department. So, what we were able to do is, when I came to Connor and Gallagher, we were able to replicate a lot of what the other large agencies are doing. And we were able to do it with quite a bit more flexibility. You know, you think of, if you're a Hub or Gallagher or any of the rest of them, you know, ideas could die on the vine between the time that you present them, come up with the idea, and then get them approved, right? You gotta go through a division. You gotta go through another department. You have to go through executive staffs. Tom, Dan, and the executive staff at Connor and Gallagher, it's a conversation. Do your due diligence. Know whatever plan you want to present before them you've done your homework on. And if you have, and it makes sense, they say, "Let's do it. Let's get it. Let's put it into place." So, with that being said, I'd just say that I'm gonna run through this slide deck pretty quickly, but I want to kind of give you an idea of some of the things we do, and I feel some of the areas that we do differentiate ourselves from. We talked a little bit at a glance. We have a fully-integrated standalone process. None of the groups that you will see before you, whether it be Hub or anybody else, has an in-house payroll firm. So, again, we can do all, or we can do some. We can piece it out. But we have risk management, employee benefits, HR and payroll, as well as 401K. So, as you grow, if you like the ideas, if you like the way we work, we can embed all these other types of programs in there. There is cost savings there. The model, our model versus the old model. You know, as I mentioned before, as I looked there, I think the thing that really, you know, catches my eye is transparency. Transparency, it's all about that. We need to get more information from the Blues. We have to better understand what their, what your experience is, how we can affect the experience. If we don't know what's going on, how can we promote a particular wellness program? How can we communicate a certain type of direction? So, to that extent, we work with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then our other partners to become more transparent, give us the information. The last thing we all want to be able to do, or the last thing we want to, the last position we want to be put in as a broker, is 90 days out, walking into you people and going, "Hey, guess what? We just got the renewal," right? You know, there's a joke in our department. We say, you know, a lot of employers, they have hope as, you know, they hope come renewal time. They hope come November. And we jokingly say, "Hope ain't no strategy." We start at day one. We start working. We develop a strategy. We put the pressure on the insurance carriers so we get the type of information. And then we work with you on a go-forward basis. And if at some point in time, we do have to transition from Blue Cross to another carrier, we'll do it. Maybe the work that we do here, as well as some of our counterparts, are gonna pressure Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide the level funding, to provide the information we need in order to better help manage your overall cost. Long-term strategy, you know, really, we could start in day one with having Kayla walk in, put a bunch of wellness posters in, and talk about the various benefits at Blue Cross Blue Shield, offer your employees that they may not even understand. By year five, we could be doing a shared clinic in town with another employer. It's, again, it's a matter of sitting down with HR, getting an understanding, and putting a long-term strategic plan together. You know, Trent Trump's right. You know, what we're, all we're trying to do is really bend this curve, right? This curve is never gonna go like this, okay? You're never gonna have negative trend. But to the extent that we implement certain ideas, whether it be wellness, claim strategies and so forth, the more we can bend this, the lower your rate's gonna be, the lower your rate's gonna be, the lower the premium's gonna be, and the lower the cost to the employees of the village is gonna be. Compliance, huge in our book. We have a, we have an attorney that we deal with. We have resources within our group that just drill us day in and day out. We have a compliance sample worksheet you could take a look at. Again, just making certain, every document you give your employees, every type of piece of information you give is compliant. I mean, I've ran into a client, a new client that I just received. They got fined by the IRS $248,000 because they put a smoking cessation plan in 2010, and in the affidavit, they didn't have a reasonable, the proper reasonable accommodation language. It's a paragraph. I came in, and that wasn't us, I came in, can you imagine that? 240. They had to go back to the smokers from 2010, and some of them were getting checks for $3,500. So, compliance is a huge issue, and I can't, you know, overstate the amount of time we work. You know, ACA, as a result of the Obamacare Affordable Care Act, there's additional reporting that you have to do on an annual basis. We do it in-house. That is one where we charge a small, modest fee in addition, but I like the idea that we have all hands on. We do all the heavy lifting, and it's seamless. It's integrated with our service. Employer education, boy, we have it all, right? You have blogs. We have webinars. You can read all the things we do. I think the nice thing about what we do, and the interesting thing is, OSHA, for example, there are people that come and get OSHA credits. You know, SHRM, which is an employee designation. You come to our seminars, you can get credits for that, for professional designations. So, it's just not your typical high-level, "Hey, here's what we got, and let's talk about Blue Cross" or whatever. We get deep into weeds with our client. We have a service calendar. I don't know if we provided that to you, but we will get one for you to show you. We have it marked out from January through December. You met the team. You know, again, when we take a look at the deliverables and the services, you know, we're gonna, I look at this as four silos: pre-renewal, renewal, post-renewal, and mid-year review. We're gonna sit down with you. We're gonna embed what needs to be done at those proper times and have a game plan that we're all gonna agree upon. The renewal process. A group your size at minimum, we're going to be out to market 120 days out. Our objective on this is to ensure that any changes we make to any and the employees effective January 1st, they're gonna have everything they need. If they need an ID card, they got an ID card. If they need to know a different type of process, it's gonna be learned. It's gonna be, you know, they'll be educated on it. The benefit planning participant advocacy, you know, this is one, and Michelle got up there, and I know she'll probably hit me in the head when I mention this, but she's known as the bulldog in our department there. And Michelle does a wonderful job in really tracking down and helping employees with claim and personal claim data. Now, one of the things I'd say to you, and I'd highly recommend, and if there's any takeaway, think of this one, too. You know, a lot of times what we find with human resource departments, the benefit people within there will actually take on and help employees when they come to them, and they'll actually, the employee will share personal health information. We highly recommend in cases like that, we have all of our employers abiding by this. Any instance where an employee comes to you with personal health information, do not answer, right? If they come to you and have a question in regards to general questions, Blue Cross, "I don't know if this is deductible, or it's out-of-pocket and so forth," we can handle that. HR can handle that. But think of it this way, and this has happened. You know, it's the old saying, "The road to hell was paved with good intentions." We've had employers who literally took on the personal health information, understood the heart condition that the person had, helped walk them through, and six months later, they had to reduce the person's hours. You know what they did? They sued them. And they said, "It wasn't as a matter of my performance. It was a matter that you had my personal health information, and you just want me off the plan." So, again, we have a strategy. We sit, we talk, we make certain. People talk compliant, we live it. We work it, and we engage it. Complete administration, Michelle talked about that, and Cobra administration as well. I think the one nice thing about the Cobra administration is we do it in-house. There's not very many agencies that you will see or will present to you where we do it in-house. We become the fiduciary. We screw up, it's us, okay? It's not you're chasing somebody who has a TPA handling the Cobra, and all of a sudden, there's a lot of finger pointing and so forth. There's one finger pointing, it's here. I don't want to have that guy looking at me either because we did it the wrong way. You know, education, we have portals. I have a number of my clients who love doing online enrollments. We have that capabilities. It takes a lot of heavy lifting around open enrollment, off-the-shoulders HR. It's, employees actually love it. You just go online, boom, everything's done. There's no paper chasing or so forth. Again, wide range of other. You want us to come in front of you? You want to do a webinar? You want calls? We can do that. Wellness, again, Kayla mentioned what her capabilities are. I'm gonna shoot through this. This is a great tool here. Think HR. This is at no cost to you. We have experts, basically, that you can call. They're basically 20-year-plus experts in the HR industry. You have any question related, employee benefits, personnel, you name it, okay? You can call them. They'll call you back. They'll restate your question so you understand, they understand what the question is, and then they'll respond to you in writing, so you have a paper trail. That's a benefit we see many, many of our employers utilizing. Technology, we talked about this, transparency. You saw on our fee, just flat out. You know, we told you what the fee is. The only add-on to that fee would be if you took our ACA-compliant tool that I spoke about earlier, and it's a very modest fee. Stewardship reports, three months after close of the policy year, we're sitting down with staff, and we're saying, "Okay, last year, here's what we said we were gonna do. What was done? What was done right? What could be better? What should we add? What should we delete?" It's right there. We do it. You have it in the document. Marketing partnerships, they had mentioned, you know, we have marketing relationships and escalated levels of recognition with all the different insurance carriers. So, whether it be Blue Cross, Humana, any of them, self-funded ancillaries, whether it be Guardian, Lincoln, Principal, MetLife, and the administrators, we have relationships as well, and, you know, we've been working with them for years. At this point in time, I'd like to thank you for taking time, and I'll open it for questions.
Looking at our current plan, do you think you could save us money?
Yeah, I can save, yes. And I'll be very quick. Let me just see if there's a couple more slides here. Yeah, we have a little sample strategic proposal here. Trust me, I'm gonna rip through this, so you're, I'm just gonna show you a couple. Short-term, you heard this, you're gonna hear this five times over, okay, guys? Okay? This is what I call low-hanging fruit. You have a PPO. You have one PPO option, as we understand it. You know, bolt on to that, the narrow network. You have employees who are sitting there that may have their doctor, their physician, and their hospital in the narrow network. That's significantly lower premiums and significantly lower contributions. That's the same both for the PPO and HMO. You heard it before. You're seeing it in writing from us. Once again, you're gonna hear this. It's gonna be like a broken record. HSA, HRA, okay, you're gonna hear a lot about that. Buy down on the deductibles. We model at varying levels to make certain that it's affordable, right? That bucket that you save, if 100% of the people use it, where are you at? If 75, if 50, if 20. And quite frankly, when you think of it, the law of large numbers, 80% of our claims are incurred by 20% of people, and you're paying 100% for 20. So, it's a matter, again, we do our own little modeling, so we, you know, you're getting the plan that fits you best. You have a number, post-65 retirees, okay? Let's off for them. The claims are hitting your experience. You can off for them to Marishur, AM Wins, Benastar, they're all wonderful administrators. They only do retirees. You know, AM Wins, for example, I've been working with them. They train their people. When they're training them, they put earmuffs on. And now you'll know what a super senior feels like when they're on the other end of the line. They train them specifically so they can understand and appreciate what's going on with retirees. Thing about this program is, more times than not, what you're gonna find is, you're gonna get, the retiree's gonna get a better benefit, it's gonna be less expensive, and you're dealing with a group that specifically does that versus just bolting on to a regular Blue Cross Blue Shield policy, okay? I think I'll leave it at that, and once again, I'll open it for any other remaining questions.
Very good.
Well, I'm, we had three groups, I'm sorry, four groups here before, and I had asked that you be added to the process, and I want to thank you very much for coming out this evening. I think the presentation was excellent, and the bottom line, I think you answered Trustee Hopkins' question, so...
Great. Thank you.
I would just like to also thank Oregon for bringing us in. And you will hear a lot of the same things from all five groups next week. What I would like to say is that it's part of the decision-making process. I think one of the things you've got to take into consideration is who we manage. And I can tell you that the team that I bring to the table and the philosophy that Connor and the other has puts its minds, whether they be public or private, you manage. You are a very nice fish in a fairly small pond, and you won't get lost in the mix. And your administrative people will, if you stay with us for three years, you have a very, very good chance at the end of three years of working with the same people they started with. Because our turnover is almost here, and that's because we're a good employer. We have honest people, and they're well-trained professionals, and we don't let them. So, I think I would ask you to take that into consideration when you make a decision. And once again, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for coming out. We appreciate you. Thank you. Very informative.
Mr. President, that's all we had.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move. Beach is second, then.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Camer, seconded by Trustee Carbonero with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Trustee Camer?